We're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session. Chase?
Good afternoon. I've got two items today. They're both change orders to Aldott in regards to A Trip One projects. Y'all may remember they came up at the last council meeting, decided to move them back to this meeting to give some more time for discussion. So hopefully, all those questions have been answered and y'all are more comfortable with that today. The first item is a change order to Aldott in the amount of $144,217.61, and that is for the Roundabout Royal and Huntsville Road. And that will settle the interim budget for that one.
Ms. President, if you don't mind, I would like to tell everybody what we all learned as a council. I know I'll talk about this in my Public Works meeting, but because this is coming up now, Blake was not there, but I think everyone else who did trouble to come that day to learn from you all about this. And just as a reminder, that the state of Alabama, they fund 80% of these projects. We are funding 20. So we will receive bills for projects once the final bills for the city, once the final bills for the state have been received. So there can always be overages until the state of Alabama closes them out. Unfortunately, in this one, we did see this, the price of this go much higher than was anticipated because of things that we found under the surface of the road, and that is what has precipitated this large bill.
That is exactly right. Yes, ma'am. So do you need me to go farther into it? Is that...
I will ask that of these folks. Is that fair enough for y'all?
That's exactly what we heard.
Okay, just making sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, well, the next one...
They didn't make us happy, but we heard it too.
You understand, all right? It's understandable.
Yes.
Second one is exactly the same thing. It's another A Trip One project, a change order to Aldott in the amount of $15,672.64, and that was for the College Street Resurfacing and Reconstruction Project.
Exactly the exact situation.
Exact situation. Yes, ma'am.
We got it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Griffin, second by Mr. Edwards. All in favor of motion?
Good afternoon. I have one, Item 11C, on the consent agenda. It's a resolution to approve a contract with Bankview Elevator Company for quarterly inspection and maintenance service. I own two elevators here at City Hall. It's an annual contract that we renew yearly. It's for $4,671 and it'll be paid from our building maintenance funds.
Y'all have any questions for me?
I do, please. Do we have, because this is, that's that building or this building?
That's the two elevators in the City Hall and the municipal building. Each, there's two total elevators.
Is there any change in how that worked, Gary? Because we no longer own that building, right?
We own...
It's but this building?
This is two elevators in this building.
Oh, okay. Not that other building?
No, it's this building here.
We have the whole Peanut Gallery way in. Thank you so much.
Are those elevator shafts to the ground dry?
There is a, when we get heavy rains, there is, the elevator shaft on the City Hall side does have some water there. There is some pump that operates when we get a lot of heavy rain.
So you have a sump pump because you expect water?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more, hold on a second, one more change order for the $15,000 that Chase brought up. We need to get a plan on that one as well.
Second. So moved.
Sir.
Motion by Mr. Griffin, second by Mr. Oliver. All in favor of the motion?
Good afternoon. Tad Cole, City Forest Gas and Water. I have one item on the consent agenda. It's 11D. This is a quote or an agreement due with Southern Water Technologies in the amount of $297,003. This is for the removal and the installation of a grit classifier chamber at the Cypress Creek wastewater treatment facility. This is to be paid for budget, 380.03 equipment treatment and disposal. And the expected delivery on this is eight to 12 months, but we're now thinking it's probably going to be more, 12 to 16 months delivery time since we've done some follow-up with that.
Will this total then go over to budget cycles, Tad? You'll pay half of, some now and then the other?
Correct. I'm not exactly sure how much we've had to pay upfront in order to place the order, but it will, yes, it will carry over.
And the $297, that's the total amount?
Yes, and I should have scratched through the attachment that I had. The base equipment price was $219,198, and then there's an installation and a labor fee of $77,805, which is the total of $297,003. The one additional price on there was for an additional PLC control panel that we're not going to need right now. We're going to add that later. That was the $67,455, but that will be added at a later date.
Probably a different budget cycle, too, it sounds like.
Correct. Yes, yes. There's no need for it right now until we actually get the equipment in and get it installed, and then we can address that later.
So we're approving the whole amount if, but we know that won't be the amount that you pay now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes. The approval is for the $297,003, but that's not what we will pay now. Any more questions on that?
How often do you have to replace a grit unit?
This is, this is a 15 to 20-year item, so it's, of course, I mean, you have wear and tear and sometimes things wear out quicker than what you anticipate. But this is not an annual, or this is, it will get a lot of life. And this is actually one of the last critical components that we need, and this plant will be really, really up to speed and doing well once we get this installed.
Do you also have one at Wilson Lake?
No, this is just for the wastewater facility.
Okay.
And actually, it kind of, it's kind of what it, in the description, it's a grit classifier chamber. It actually removes grit and solids and that type of thing at the headworks of the plant. So this is just for...
That is fascinating.
Yes, it's, it could be pretty interesting to go and see and also can be pretty nasty as well, so I won't say that. Any more questions on that? And then I know there was a lot of time for me to discuss and answer any questions in relation to the letter that the majority of our customers received. We mailed these out on Thursday, and most of them received them yesterday or Sunday day. We filled in a lot of calls regarding this letter, and so we wanted to discuss and I'll be, you know, try to answer any questions that you guys may have regarding the letter.
I think just explain it.
Okay, we can do that. So this is a nationwide mandate by A.D.M., by EPA, and of course, it is carried out through A.D.M., which is our governing sanctioning body, the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. So on October the 16th, there was a lead service line inventory due, and every one, every water authority in the country has to submit a lead service line inventory. And it was due October the 16th. We submitted ours around October the 13th because we knew we were not going to be able to complete all 20, roughly 27,000 homes and businesses, all the water meters that we service. So in order for the inspection to take place, we had to go and we physically inspect the city-owned side of the meter, if you will, and then we also inspect the service line leaving the meter, the privately-owned line leaving the meter. And so as you can imagine, the majority of them, we had to go dig up both sides. And we've got a crew of individuals, anywhere from six to eight, weather permitting, that work on this daily, and they have been for almost a year now. And so October the 16th was the deadline. We submitted ours October the 13th. The reason these letters were mailed out is because at that time, we only had completed around 8,000 to 10,000 of the 20, roughly 27,000 inventory on the meters. So within 30 days of October the 16th, which would have been the end of the week last week, we had to, according to EPA and A.D.M., it was mandated by them, we had to mail a letter to all of the folks that we have not yet inspected, all of the customer meters, businesses, homes that we've not yet inspected, informing them that they have unknown service lines feeding and leaving their meter. And so that's what this letter is about. It's simply just a statement, a letter stating that "We do not know exactly what your service lines are currently because we have not yet got to your meter and inspected it." We're doing neighborhood, street by street, road by road, and like I said, these individuals or crews are working on it daily. This does not mean that you have lead service lines. This does not mean that you do not have lead service lines. All this means is we don't know what you have currently. And so there's a chance that you have lead, albeit it's going to be a small percentage, and I can share this information. So of the roughly sixteen we've actually inspected, you know, a little over 1,000 more meters. And of those that we have inspected, we've only found two service lines that are lead. And actually, both of those service lines were the privately-owned section of the line leaving the meter between the meter and the home, not the city-owned side, side that we maintain service. So of course, those two individuals or homes or businesses, they received a different letter stating that we have found a lead service line and we recommend that you change that lead service line out immediately if possible. Of course, they own it and they maintain it, so they can do as they wish. They are not, you know, right now, we're not mandating or forcing them to change this out, but we just, we can make a recommendation that they do this. Question?
Is there any lead on the city side?
Not so far, no, sir. We have not, we have not discovered any lead service lines on the, on the city side of the meter, not so far. Now, you know, we've still got several thousand meters to go, so we may, we may encounter that. If we do encounter that, it usually takes about 48 hours for a locate to be called out and for the ground to be located, but within 48 hours, we will send another crew out and we will replace that lead service line as soon as we find it. Now, we will still have to inform that customer that they have a lead service line, even though we're in the process of replacing it. We will still inform them that they have a lead service line feeding their meter, but we will replace it almost immediately.
The actual letter didn't come from the city of Florence, did it?
The, we did, we did put the, if this makes sense, this was a template provided by the EPA, and we put all of our information into this template. And then, of course, we mailed it out. So we did, in a sense, it did come from us, but this is a template that was provided to us from the EPA for us to kind of go by.
So people in Texas got that this week?
Very similar, and, and I, you know, I can say this for certain. There are local water authorities other than us. We've seen copies of their letters. They're almost identical to these.
So what does it look like, Tad, when you go to somebody's area or neighborhood? Do you give any advance notice you're coming? And what does it look like when you're at the house?
Well, for instance...
I walked in last week.
See, there you go. Okay, we have a, we have a real-time testimony here.
Yeah, I walked in and said, "What are you doing?" And I didn't say it like that. He tried to explain to me what he would do, and so when I got the letter, I went, "Oh, that's what they're doing."
Yes, and so basically, what we're doing is we're sending a crew of six to eight individuals headed by one of our foremen, and they're going, you know, meter to meter, house to house, neighborhood by neighborhood, street by street. And, you know, we tell them if they, you know, if the customer or the business owner has questions, you know, come out, they'll just pull up to the street. They'll go, if they can pop the meter lid and physically inspect those lines without having to do any kind of excavation, then they will. But that's relatively impossible. So, and of course, we try to just dig up, you know, excavate just a small spot, usually with a shovel. We very rarely have to incorporate a backhoe or anything, you know, any type of device like that. And, but they will inspect the city side and also the private owner side of the lines. And of course, if, you know, we've instructed them to fill in the customer, the homeowner, the business owner, whomever it is, of what they're doing and let them know, you know, upfront that we're just, we're doing this as part of our lead service line inventory. We do not hang flyers. We do not call ahead of time. That, you know, we don't do any of that. We have, we have discussed maybe posting ahead of time, you know, certain neighborhoods or streets or roads on our social media pages and that type of thing. And we can certainly look at that moving forward, you know, to try to maybe curb some of the...
So, yeah, two additional questions. How long until you finish this work?
Our goal is to, of course, we would like to finish yesterday, but it's, but it's a, it's a very time-consuming, you know, it requires manpower and that type of thing. Of course, you know, we all know we're shorthanded as it is. But, so our goal is to finish it in the next 12 months, is ideally what we would like to do.
Okay, I would strongly suggest taking a different approach as far as sharing via a press release or something else, simply because you do a really good job of letting people know how safe our water is. But that, what happened with this letter cast all of that in a suspicious light. And that's not something you can come back from easily. So knowing that it's going to take a little bit more time, I would suggest that you take a different tack with letting residents know because we've all gotten questions or concerns. I'm assuming we all have.
Absolutely.
And I couldn't answer it, and that puts me at a disadvantage, too, as a whole. So I, so it was a question of suggestion.
Sure, we'd be glad to. You know, we can post it on Facebook. We can put it on the city's webpage, anything. You know, if we know we're going to be doing a certain subdivision or a certain neighborhood, street, road, whatever, then of course, we can, we can, you know, try to post that ahead of time as much as possible, and...
What's your approximate number you've completed so far?
To date, we are somewhere, the last account I had, and of course, we've got some that are on Gina's desk that we've not put into the, into the database yet, but we're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we're somewhere between 13,000 and 14,000 that we've completed. Maybe right on the upper side of 14,000. So we've got roughly about that many to go. We're approximately 50% complete.
Congratulations on a job that you were commanded to do.
Yes, yes.
And if you keep doing this, you're going to be along with the street department. He always has something missing with garbage.
And we're averaging, I would say we're probably, on a good day, we're probably averaging 50 to 60 meters a day somewhere in that neighborhood if all the crew are on hand and working. And so, but you know, I will say, this, this letter does not state that you have lead service lines or lead contamination in your water. It just simply states that you're, if you receive one of these, your service line right now is unknown. What it consists of is unknown to us.
That's not what they read?
Right, right. But if they see lead and they see, you know, and I can understand this. And I'll say this, I don't agree with necessarily the way we were told to do this, but when you're, when you're mandated...
But I also think we could have done more to help make sure, "Hey, you're going to get this letter and this is what it means."
Sure. And that's why I made the statement earlier today, you know, in hindsight, we should have posted something on our Facebook or on the webpage ahead of time. I won't say warning because warning's really not appropriate in this situation, but ahead of time letting folks know that it was, you know, you would be receiving something in the mail.
So was anything posted on your site, Neil?
We have, we have it posted on our Facebook page, and if I'm not mistaken, it's on the webpage as well. I know there's, the webpage is recently launched, and there's, there's still some bugs and things that are probably being worked out with that, and so... And then also on top of that, we're mandated to post the inventory itself on our, on our webpage. And that is in the process. We've got all that sent up to IT, and they're in the process of working on that as well. So if a customer can go onto our webpage, they can click onto the link for the inventory itself, and they can scroll and find their address, which is how we classify everything, and they will be able to see if theirs is unknown, if it's copper, if it's PVC, so on and so forth, if we've been toward it up, up until this point.
Did this also affect Lauderdale County?
Yes, sir, it's nationwide.
Does their letter say Florence or does it say Killen?
Whomever they purchase, whomever provides their water. So like, if you're a West Lauderdale Water Authority customer, your letter would have come from West Lauderdale, East Lauderdale, Town of Rogersville, Town of Lexington, and so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Tad, a couple of things. One, thank you for taking my call at 7:30 in the morning today.
Sure, no problem.
I'm in a couple of the Facebook groups with the different neighborhoods, and they were pretty alarmed, and then they were super happy. One thing they did request is if I could let them know when you are finished with this. So if you could let us know as a council when it's complete, that'd be great. But it's also helpful knowing that they, about that link. I'll look that up tomorrow and share it on those groups so that they can kind of monitor it.
They should be able to access it. I'm not exactly sure. I've not followed up with IT to see when that will be available, but I would assume in the next few days anyway.
When I have to see that it goes live, I'll search here.
Absolutely, and I will, I'll keep y'all up to date on exactly our progress through it and our completion date as well.
Hey, one final thing. If it took you a year to do 14,000, does your safety say it's going to take a year to do another 14,000?
Well, you know, we've, we've kind of sped the process up a little bit.
Yes.
But I will say this, our new GIS program is fixing to go online. It's fixing to go live, and so we're going to start implementing this as well. So we may slow back down for a period of time because we're going to do a paper copy as well as a digital copy of it.
We've got to get into a weather situation, too.
And also, that's exactly, we're also getting into the time of year where it's going to be wet, it's going to be cold, and all the other things that play into it, and so that's going to slow us down as well. So yes, I have to answer your question. I would say it's going to be the better part of the year anyway before we can complete it. And this is going to be an ever-evolving, living, breathing document. I think that once everything's taken in inventory, I think we're going to see some more mandates by EPA later on that this, you know, it's not something that's just going to go away. Once it's completed, it's going to be ever-changing.
You've brought us good information tonight. Thank you.
No problem. I appreciate it. Any more questions?
Thank you, Tad.
Thank y'all.
David?
Good afternoon. It is leaf season, by the way, and we are fixing to have a big push on leaves couple first weeks of December. We're going to work really hard, so I'm encouraging everybody to get that leaves right out there. We'll make several passes as we always do, but we got that big push coming up. We're going to use everybody we got.
Are you leaving them for Thanksgiving so that children can run and jump in them?
I am not. I am not.
You could have said yes and been everyone's hero.
You've got to take your chances when you come, come and buy, so get those leaves out there for me. Three items on the agenda tonight. The first one is resolution is E, and that's an invoice with fueling solutions. A few weeks back, I had a water in the fuel tank, underground tank at the landfill. This is to fix the cap and the electronics that go in the cap for filling, so we hopefully won't get water back in the fuel tank. That is $510.30. Any questions on that one? The second one is an invoice dated November 4th for tractor and equipment. We have a Swartz street sweeper in there, the servicing dealership. They came. We have some error codes coming up, $1,327 to repair this machine so we can get the street sweeper back out there doing its thing. Any questions on that? All right, Item G is invoice to Keaton Electric. This is for temporary and permanent power at the new fuel station across the street from Recycle. We had to have a temporary one put in there pretty quick when they got to that point. And so we've gone ahead now and got the building put in and the permanent power put in. So hopefully, a couple lines will be, a couple weeks will be coming online with a new fueling station for the city.
David, this is not related to these three things, so I don't want to jump in if anybody has a question about that. But I did want to ask you, we are entering a season of difficult weather. We could have snow and ice or just cold. We worked really hard after the last event earlier this year, and I'd like it if we could at Public Works next week, if you would remind everybody what that is and how we're prepared for it.
Yeah, we actually had a snow committee, unofficial, meeting yesterday with the EMA Fire Police, me, engineering, and I really got a pretty good plan working together, and I will present that next week at the Total Works Committee. So we feel pretty good about it. It was a really good meeting, and we got some pretty good ideas. We just hope that it doesn't ever snow again.
If it snows, let it snow.
Anything else for me?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Good afternoon. How are y'all doing today?
Good.
Got a couple of items. The first item is Item H, which is a contract to, with Austin Shelton. Other kicks in Lexis Avant, they're going to be performing at the lighting at Wilson Park. And we're going to split this with the library, so it'll be $300 each. Next one is Item I, and it is to enter into contract with CNH Cooling. They're going to install three drain pans at Blackberry Trail Pro Shop. We've had some leaking problems. It's caused us some ceiling damage, and that's why this amount, you got to crawl up into the, to the ceiling. It's a pretty big undertaking, so the amount of that is $8,299. This has been pretty much an ongoing problem that we're hoping to resolve.
I'm surprised they didn't have drain pans to begin with.
It did. They, I'm not really, like I said, these are up in the ceiling, so the way that these were draining, were not adequately drained correctly, so when they overflow, it ran, it's, that's, we've been probably three or four times trying to resolve this.
So this will take care of the leaks, hopefully, but then you'll come back and do resolutions for work to repair the damage?
We've already done one for the old shop outside, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is the inside pro shop, yeah?
This is, yes, ma'am. Next is Item J, and this is to enter into contract with Certified Alarm. They're going to be installing some electronic badge readers for us at Broadway, and this amount is $6,526.45.
Is that only at Broadway, or do you have them everywhere else, or is that the only one?
The next one is Item K, which will be at...
The Coliseum.
The Coliseum.
Yeah.
So really, the goal, we'll have them now at Central Office. We'll have them at, pretty much all the, the goal is to get them all for every place. Because as y'all read, I guess you saw where we had some, some people that entered Broadway that weren't really supposed to be there, had to call the police. So with kids in there, safety is paramount. The next one is a change order for the Pantry Project with Butler Construction. Any questions about that particular item or... The total of that change order was $20,640.20. The main part of that was, if y'all know where the pool part is, normally someone says, there was a mushroom water feature there. So when they took that mushroom out, it caused some problems with the slab that was sitting on. We tried to, you know, resolve it just with what was there, but it did not work. So this will basically do that. And we're also going to do a sidewalk around the back so people don't, if they're going to the pool, they don't enter through the new center. They can go around.
So that, is the $20,600 and change, is that the sidewalk as well?
Yes, ma'am. That's the total cost price.
So repairing the slab and the sidewalk to make it accessible?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Does that come, where, where does that money, you say, where does it come from?
That's just the same amount of money that we're taking to do the project itself. And so that, I brought, I got to use another foreman electronics. So the projected price of this was, when we first started, was $1,292,766, and we're up to $1,252,107. So we're still $40,000 and some odd dollars under the projected cost of this.
Motion for the change order?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Jobb, second by Mr. Edwards. All in favor of the motion? Bill, one question before they, can you just give us all as an update as to where we are with this, with the center?
Absolutely. You know, I think I sent it out. I'll just go back and kind of read the last meeting that we had. I want to get ahead of myself. We just got an updated one today. I'll just kind of paraphrase. I can't get right to it now, but they're right on track. They're moving along. They're starting on the other side, kind of working in conjunction. But they're moving along very, very well. If y'all want to do a tour, I'm happy to take you through there.
Is it safe to come in?
Yes, ma'am.
Without the workers in their way?
Absolutely. There it is. I think this is the last one. I would have had it, sorry, would have had it pulled up. My apologies. So the project remains on schedule. The above-ceiling inspection is scheduled for Thursday, November 21st. Acoustical ceiling tiles will be installed, which is after the locker room renovation is complete. Electrical is continuing. All the junctions... Electrical is continuing, all the junction boxes above the ceilings are tied in, so they're basically working on the electrical. Millwork is scheduled to be installed after flooring is installed, the painting is in progress. Butler Construction will trim the samples for the surrounding mural, the sunshade posts, and I know we're working on some of the sunshades as we speak, and then it said we discussed the proposed change order that we've y'all just, just voted on. So, they're, they're moving along and it's still on schedule, but as we discussed earlier, we're not going to open up one side until the locker rooms are done. And if you haven't been in there to see the locker room, I highly encourage you to go look at that, because you'll realize how much space is in there.
What's that projected?
I think we're shooting for around the first, right after, you know, maybe January or February, so moving along.
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you all, y'all have a good evening.
You too. Mary?
How are you all this afternoon? I've got a couple items on the agenda, the first one is, our contract maintenance plus expired, it expired after three years, so we got a new price from them that went up $10 basically per hour for their service, so this is a new agreement with us to do all the maintenance on our electric, not electrical, mechanical central units.
How often do you have to call them?
How often? Too often. We have a lot of central units at our buildings, so we, they're at least once a month at our office, one of our offices, buildings. They do a good job for us. Second item is, as you all know, we're redesigning our Shoals Creek substation, and so this is an agreement with Shaw Creek, and for them to do all the foundation work for us of the job before we start construction in the spring, and it is at a cost, we find the cost of Any questions on that?
Can I, can I ask a question? That substation there, I know in the past, we have a sign, it was sewn, is it still working?
I don't know that, I don't know.
Do I know where I'm talking about? Okay.
I don't know if it is or not. The next one is a release with, well, we won't, we won't throw the names, but with Martin Insurance Agency, where they hit one of our poles, and this is a release of after they pay, the damages were released and the ball responsibilities that get towards this property Any questions for that one? Okay. I also have a change order, while they were starting the paving project at our campus, they came across a soft spot, and so this is a change order in order to repair the soft spot, so they could pave over it in the amount of $7,736.24. So, I think it was caused from, about three years ago, we had to replace the sewer line, it was an old clay line that was going to our crew room, and so we had to dig in a new sewer line, and the storm drain underneath the road was damaged at that time and collapsed, but we didn't see any problems because it was paving that, it was over forty years, was pretty much a bridge over it, but once they took all that out, the soft spot was discovered, so they basically had to rebuild kind of a bridge over it to, order to pave over it.
Mary, is that project still on track, or does this delay it?
No, it's still on track, they're supposed to pave, so they're doing three sections, and they should start paving the first section tomorrow. They're kind of doing sections at a time, so we can drive around.
Okay. We have any additional questions before we go on?
Oh, I got one when we're done with this, before she leaves, so.
Oh, okay.
About something else, so.
Okay, can we get a motion for the change order?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards, second, my Ms. Eubanks, all in favor of the motion?
That what you got?
Well, I was asked this, go ahead.
I asked Mary, we get so many calls about the traffic signals and the lights, and so I did ask Mary to come and just publicly take the time and explain it, if you don't mind.
I'll be happy to. So, I think two years, well, it started about four years ago, but it went into place about two years ago. The city and the state of Alabama did a traffic study to study the traffic flows in the city on their road right of ways, and so after the study was complete, this was about two, two and a half years ago, they went through and they reprogrammed the traffic lights at all intersections to reflect what their study showed. So, on the state intersections, the city of Florence, our truce department, we may maintain the intersection, but we cannot change what is programmed in the intersection. So, what the state program, we cannot change. When we maintain them, we reset them, if the loop goes out, we replace them with the wave tronic system, but we can't change any of the settings. So, I know it's very frustrating to a lot of people when they pull up to these, but it's just something that's out of our control.
So, who do they need to call instead of?
So, ALDOT is the person that has the program, so if they want to reach out to someone, they need to contact the ALDOT office in most Shoals, and that would be their contact person.
Good luck.
ALDOT, well, at least it gives them a resource and they know who to call.
That is just city, that's just city. No, that's just state. So, what do they do if there's a city issue, and hang on, because we have this, as you mentioned, at Darby and Cloyde, we know there's some problems there, and those are both city roads, so what do we do in that case?
So, on all the just the city like Pine Streets, you know, there's lots of just, just city. So, if there is a issue with any of the just city intersections, they can either fill out their report online, or it's, you know, submit a light problem on our website, or they can call our office, and, and we will go check them. We have one right now at Cloyde and Darby that we're dealing with, and Shoals Electric is working on it, they're waiting for parts to finish the project, but, but we address those as we get them. And I know Pine Street's a big one, and, you know, the lights, you know, of course, I've had actually compliments from the police department that they're not all turning green at one time, because it's like a raceway, people driving through there, so, you know, as we pave the streets in the city of Florence, we kind of follow the paving because they dig up our loops as they pave the streets, and that's kind of the streets that we upgrade for the year, because they're cutting this, you know, loops out of the street and we're having to replace them, so that's kind of the way we replace. And then if we come across some that are having issues, like, you know, Darby and Cloyde, and we have one at Hilton right now, we're having some issues, and we're working with the state, because that is a state right of way, to address those issues, so. So, yes, call our office?
Or fill out the form.
Or fill out the form online.
Would you send us all the link, Mary, so that we're making sure we're giving residents the right link to fill, fill out? And then, I mean, that's troubling, though, that we can only send them to a very unresponsive state agency.
Yeah, I agree, but now, that's not the link to the state, the link is just to us.
No, I know, I'm saying, we don't have another mechanism for them to get any sort of relief?
No, we don't even, I mean, you know, we call and we get the same answer, and we get the same answers everyone else gets, so.
Can you give an update on Pine Street?
So, Pine Street, if, or, we, like I said, we've actually been asked to not reset them to where they all turn red at the same time, because it's, it's kind of, like I say, it's a raceway to the end of the street.
Sure is.
And so, it's, it's a, it's a traffic problem, and so really, they prefer them to not be all green at one time, so we are not going to replace those right now until probably the whole, more of the streets paved at one time, and as they eat up the loops, then we'll probably put in a new wave tronic system, so is our plan, but I don't, we don't really have the time when we're going to do it. Because I mean, because we, like I said, we've, you know, they kind of like the fact that they're not green at the same time anymore, so.
I do too, because I almost got hit the other day.
I know.
And they're not even all synced, and they're still just.
Yes, yeah, they're racing to get to that, and that's the way I come to and for them from work every day, so it's, it's a race to the end of the line.
Well, they used to be programmed, that if you were at the far end, when you got to the halfway point, the others turned green, and it only worked out if you were driving the speed limit. If you drove over the speed limit, you'd have to stop, and if you went too slow, you would miss the light. That was the best time that we ever had
That you ever had.
On Pine Street, because it kept everyone driving the speed limit, and you didn't have to stop, so.
How about update, update, I know the loops, and I know there's several, if you go past that.
Yes, so when you pull up to an intersection, you can see where the loops are cutting the road, and so you need to make sure you don't pull up past the loops, because then it will never trip it, so you need to make sure you pull up where your front tires are on the loops and not beyond it, so.
So, the cost of it compared to the wave tronics is what?
Well, probably five times the cost, but that's what we're putting all new in right now, is the wave tronics.
That's what's at Cloyde or Darby.
Mm-hmm. And that's what, that's what we're putting in new is the wave tronic system. It is like a laser system, where we have to put in a couple radars and it senses the cars from the radars.
So, Mary, I know you're going to send us the links, so what is that phone number that they call?
You can call 760-6530 is our warehouse main office number, and, or you can call our dispatch number, it's 764-4456, and that's 24/7, so they can call at any time and report.
Great, thank you for your help.
I got one, one thing, and my apologies in advance, if you don't have the answer to this, guys, I just don't know who else to ask, because I've been asked this. The new six lane that the state's doing, do you know if there's plans to light that? And also, who is responsible for lighting Shoals Creek Bridge? I had some guy talking to me the other day, that how dark it is on Shoals Creek Bridge, and I never really paid any attention to it until I went through there, and I'm like, wow, he's right.
He is.
But I just wondered if the state is responsible for that, or we, and are they going to light the six lane?
So, normally on a state project, the state will contract out the initial installation of the lights, and then we will maintain them after they initially install. Like on Singin River Bridge, that's the way it happened, like they contracted, had someone install them, and we maintain them on Singin River. But we have not seen any plans to light Highway 72 out towards Killen, we have not seen the plans to light it.
It would be a shame, that's going to be such a nice road, and it's just dark out there, no lighting at all.
So, yes, because all the lights on the right, you know, state, we have to get approval what sizes we can put in, and we have to, you know, has to be within their standards, so we, you know, if we were to just go do it, it'd have to be lighting, you know, engineered study done on it in order to put the correct size lights on there. Anything else?
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Hi, so we have three public hearings tonight, all for rezonings. Hopefully you all received the information that I sent you. These are what I would consider run-of-the-mill cases. The first one will be Main Street Communities, which is the former ECM property. We've been working on this for a number of years, and it is a phased project, but this would be the final step in approving the planning and development. The second one is on Huntsville Road, this would be directly in front of Tanner Estates, they're looking to develop additional single-family housing there. And the last one is on Hermitage Drive, just before, if you're, if you take Hermitage Drive from Hilton headed south, like you were going toward the stadium, before you cross the bridge, there's a vacant piece of property that would be on your left, so it's directly behind the convenience store that sits at the intersection of Hilton and Hermitage, and that, they're looking to develop multifamily housing there.
They've already cleared that property yet?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I actually think it's been cleared a few times over the years.
That was a chubby, sir.
Charles.
Never heard his first name. He was never chubby.
Any questions at all?
These all went through planning, I was participating in that meeting, and they encountered, no hesitation, they were, they were unanimous prior to the planning commission.
Right, fully unanimous and fully in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan.
How often does a piece of property come apart, someone planning to build something in the city that doesn't make it through the planning?
Rarely.
It has happened, it has happened, but it is very, very rare, in my experience, it's been one time.
Yeah, because we have, you know, application requirements that they have to meet, so by the time it gets to the planning commission level, it's been fully vetted.
And then we have a really good discussion about it, and then, of course, there's an opportunity for residents to speak then, too, if they have concerns to be voiced, and we hear from them, and oftentimes, between the developer being there for that, and then Melissa and her team, their questions and/or concerns are addressed, and while it might get tabled or hang out for a second, it usually comes back and it's got complete approval. And the last time, they completely changed their minds, and they were like, yes, thank you, we've been heard, and it works out. That's the good work of those votes, right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did take a lot of pride in that process. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I get to my two items, I'd like to ask you, if you would, I sent each one of you an email today, about two weeks ago, I got a letter from Caitlin Burns at the Chamber asking us to consider, recently, the state legislature took sales tax off of, of irrigates. So, today I talked, we've had a second issue, is that an audiologist, a irrigating person, who called me, and at the time, I contacted the league, and there were only, there was only two cities that needed to consider that, so I guess the question, I did guidance from you, I know that, I talked to Mr. Letcher today from Drook, and he's got a couple of businesses, one in Tuscaloosa, I know he spoke with William Foster over there, and they're considering, so I guess I just need direction from y'all, what y'all would like to do, and I'm assuming we'll ask Mr. Bostrow if y'all want to do that, it's just a matter of resolution.
Yeah, we just, I've read, I've read the act, but I can't remember, I mean, it would be some form of ordinance or resolution, we just have to follow whatever procedure they set forth.
So, I guess if you don't want to talk about it tonight, if you want to speak to me, or if you want to direct it to committees to consider, or?
I'm only concerned that, and I love the idea, but why not eyeglasses, or prosthetics, or canes, I mean.
I, that's a legislative guy, the guy I talked to today, he said there was some particular person there who, who kind of pushed this project through, so. How many cities do you see? The times are two, and I, it was in the email, said, I can't remember right off.
Madison, Maryland.
What?
Madison, totally.
Madison totally, I think that's right.
I would like to talk with our legislators and find the history behind this and why it wasn't expanded to include other things, and, you know, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I would like a little more investigative time on what we're doing, because I certainly don't want any backlash from other retailers, you know, that could have similar type businesses.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a great gesture, but I agree with Ms. Eubanks, I mean, you know, you know, what about people who have to have, you know, as you said, glasses, contact lens, I mean, you know, the list goes on and on, you know, so. That's why I'm seeking guidance. Yep, all right.
So, what I'm hearing, Mary, is we'll get back with you.
Perfect. All right, I have two items, one is 11-0, and this is contract with Tomlin Excavating Company, which is, is the demolition of the old parking deck, and that's been to both Public Works and the Finance Committee. Any questions? The second is the Lauderdale County Public Utilities Advisory Board, and, you know, I sat down with, Billy and I sat down with each one of you, we've been working for some time to get ahead of any legislation. We've been working for some time to get ahead of any legislation that could might come forward in the coming legislative season regarding our utilities. And we've done that with the assistance of some of our legislators and with our lobbyist Philip Bryan. And each one of you, we spoke with you. We had the opportunity yesterday to speak with the county. I'm sure all of you know that I've been working with TAD with out in the county on some water issues and working with the mayors out there and it's gone very, very well. This would be similar to that, except I want to make it more official. And so I've been, you know, Billy could probably help me more, but this is making it more official. And just asking you to to create this board, I can't guarantee it's gonna work. And but I can say that it'll be communication they're asking for. I know Ms. Simmons and Mr. Edwards were in the meeting with the county. And since that time, I've sat down with both TAD and with Mary. It went over all that. I feel good about it. I feel, and also, I've got a statement that I sent to them with any employees that were concerned. This in no way affects their jobs. This is simply about communication. And I think Mr. Edwards and Ms. Simmons would say a lot of what the county was saying, we'd never heard about. I mean, we can't fix, we can't correct things that are happening out there unless the state talks to us. So I think we need more communication. And we believe this will stop any efforts from the legislature. And I'm trusting our lobbyists and our legislators as we do that. So I ask that you support that and we'll keep you updated on that.
It was a, it was a good meeting on yesterday. And what I gathered from it that they were, of course, we have some reservations, but the overall, I gathered that they were open to at least giving it a try for the communication.
I think you're right.
Do you have any idea when you'll try to convene the group if it passes?
Well, my understanding from talking to Blake, not Blake.
Allen. Allen Cadeau?
No, from the, from the league, the one that's the.
Allen Baker?
Baker. Baker Allen. The legislation, I mean, it could be prefiled. There's a, there are four week, four week postings. So it could happen before the end of the year. So if we move this, I'd like to go ahead and call a meeting as soon as possible. I'd like to reach out. I think the mayors will be absolutely delighted to have this conversation.
But they don't know that this is what you're planning to do, the mayor's.
The mayors do not.
So providing this passes tonight, you're gonna go ahead and reach out to them immediately, right?
Absolutely.
Because it's about to be.
Absolutely.
Well, it just seems that concern is just lack of information. And obviously, the right hand is what the left hand's doing. You know, they don't understand things that's going on over there in the same way. So this just kind of bridges that gap.
I certainly, I certainly hope so. I mean, utility is very important to us. And I think we found out with the water side, like there's some things we can do when we work together. And I'm certainly pleased with that. And I think that's been recognized by the county too.
A meeting with the water board, that's really, I want everybody together. Everybody working together to solve that problem.
That's true. And and it's really working. You know, there's been good conversation about it. Mayor, what are, I know we received emails from Mary and TAD, but they're gonna be on the tip of the spear. Tell me what their thoughts about it are.
Well, I certainly don't want to speak for them, but I think they they want something that works. You know, I think the issue that I sent to about employees, employees are saying, how will this affect me? And, you know, I'd like to just, if you don't mind, I'll read my message to them about the employees. Is that okay? I said, the creation of the proposed Utilities Advisory Board will in no way affect the employees' compensation, retirement, or working conditions. In fact, one of the main reasons that I'm working so hard to bring the advisory board to fruition is to protect the electricity, water, and wastewater and gas department employees. The formation of the advisory board rather than some other type of board created by the legislature will ensure that the employees remain city employees and keep all of their current salaries at benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a couple of board appointments. We have two applications for SEDA. And you all should have a copy of those, Aubrey Whips, Listen, and Mike Curtis. And then we have one application for the tree commission and one vacancy, Bridget Sims. And you should all proceed as well.
Can we go ahead and make nominations?
Good.
I would like to nominate Mike Curtis for that. He is a former elected official, but he also has expressed an interest in that to me directly. And I encouraged him to apply for it. He has time. And I think that's an important voice to have, somebody who is a strong voice, but who understands and has the time to dedicate to it. He is retired. I, for one, appreciate that. I love Aubrey, however, I love.
I second that. And we can make two motions, correct?
Yes.
And I encouraged Aubrey to apply. So obviously, I'm going to nominate Aubrey for that. Wanted to do this once before when there wasn't an opening. So anyway, I have, you know, I'd like to nominate Aubrey.
Kind of fall in that same category. I did not receive Mr. Curtis's application until, what, just a couple of days ago, I guess. And I already had spoken with the other. And so it kind of put me in a bad spot. Michelle's right, Mr. Curtis is an absolutely fine candidate. And if he's not selected, then I hopefully in the future, his name will stay in the mix and and we can certainly get him on there, but.
And same for Aubrey.
Right, right.
Okay, Mr. Aubrey's was, looks like he applied on the sixth and Mr. Curtis on the fourteenth. So with that being said, all in favor, since Mr. Curtis was the first nominee, all in favor of Mr. Curtis?
Can we call them and ask them if they'll add a person?
That's a joke, Kathy.
All in for Ms. Wilson. Go. Go.
But it's thirty seven.
It's a ton.
It's a ton. This has never happened.
It's not never happened.
This has never happened.
I think it has happened, happened with me. And it got moved to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Move it to the next meeting, yeah.
I would advise though, reaching out to them and see if maybe they can make room for two.
They can't.
Okay.
They can't do that. Yeah, right.
Got you.
I suggest that since I reached out to Aubrey and did you reach out to Mike?
He reached out to me.
Okay. I'm gonna reach out to Aubrey if you reach back out to Mike. And maybe between the two of them, there will be a compromise that they will move.
Well, I did speak with Mr. Curtis this morning and told him I regretted that I did not get his. And he was like, hey, man, I understand. All I ask you to do is just keep it on file, you know, for the next time. So, you know.
He also put in for Curtis, if I remember.
Yeah, I encouraged him to apply for other options just in case. But he was very passionate about SEDA, so.
But listen.
So we have two, we have two options.
Yeah, absolutely.
Either one will compromise and withdraw for right now. Or the council will come to make that decision.
I tell you what, it's great to have this problem, two very qualified candidates only circled.
Right, totally agree.
So we'll get it worked out for next, the next meeting. Next is the tree commission appointment. We only have one candidate, and that's Bridget Sims.
I'll make the motion that we that we nominate Ms. Sims to the tree commission.
I'll second her. Motion from Ms. Eubanks, second. I can treat all that favor on the motion. That's it. Okay, we're gonna take a quick five minute break. And then we'll come right back so we can get Mr. Whitey started.
Appreciate that.
That's right, he's gonna go on the road, doesn't he?